Hi, Patrick?
Here.
Natalie?
Here.
Patrick Duncan?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes.
Here.
We all rise and go together.
The United States of America. And to the great glory of our change. One nation, our God. And in this world, we're the only in this world.
The agenda is before you. Are there any additional corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. We have minutes from the sixth and the nineteenth. They came today.
Monday.
So they are before you. If you have them. Any corrections, additions to the minutes from the sixth of the nineteenth of September? Hearing none, is our motion for approval?
A motion for support.
There's a motion for support. All papers aye?
Aye.
Both the same? We have no special orders, study session? Kelly Moack, Director of the MacAscan Development Corporation, who has been semi-dizzy this last few months. Would like to give us an update, our quarterly update.
Yeah, so thanks for having me. You, the creator of your record, is one of our investors for MacAscan Development Corporation. So I met with Mark a couple of months ago and I hit my six-month mark tomorrow, actually, being on the job. And so perfect timing to do a quarterly update for all my investors and the different boards in the community. So you're my first one. Thanks for having me. I'm just going to call it for you. So I'm sitting at the front of the room, right? So when you look at our, the right place in our eight county regions, I wanted to show you, so these are the counties that the right place is, has a partnership with. So in the red, that's RPI covers, the right place covers these. We have contacts with all these counties with directors like myself to do academic development. But we are region four, so this gives you, you know, the overall, the Michigan Academic Development Corporation is region four, so it actually covers all of these counties. But these are the ones that we kind of partner with and help with regional support, things like that, other businesses that might be in Grand Rapids, might be able to help us on a project, something like that. So we really, our regional resources to really help our local counties as well. Well, they come down. And then I just wanted to throw this one in there, you know, when you really look at academic development, there's a lot of different things. So most jobs and talent and diversity and we want younger families to come here, so how can we make that happen while we provide jobs, while we provide housing, different things like that? Talent, pulling kids from Ferris or other colleges, Grand Valley, Michigan State, things like that, to come here and want to build their businesses or expand, things like that. So I just want to show, you know, economic development has a lot of things and these are just a few of them. And what I focus on, it's a very broad range, but these are a lot of the things that I focus on every day. When you look at economic development and our work at the right place, we do retention, expansion and attraction. Those are our key three kind of buckets, if you will. Eighty percent of the work that we do though is retention and expansion. That's really trying to keep the businesses here, what do they need, I need with them? Do you need space? Do you need workforce? What can I help with? And then again, with expansion, bringing new businesses in what spaces we have available to bring people from other regions up to our area. So that's really where a lot of my work is. Attraction is like the fun stuff, you know, the other fun stuff. So for example, if White House was interested in coming, something like that, that would be a community attraction, something that would bring a different resource avenue to the community. So I'm involved, but more of it is focused on that retention and expansion. When it comes to the right place, these are our strategic growth areas. We're really focused on advanced manufacturing, technology, health sciences, infrastructure and agro-agriculture. We don't have a ton of eggs and food here, like Mason County or the way what county does the burger and things like that, but it is in my bucket to work on. And this is shifting right now, I know Mark's aware of it, but the right place is redoing their strategic plan right now. And we've worked with our county partners, all those eight counties, and we're bringing four members in to have a feel for, you know, what do you want to see from our strategic plan and how we can help with our rural counties and partner counties to help bring some influence into the, our strategic plan and all that. So my executive board, these are just the members on my current executive board. And we do have a vacant position with Ferris. Michelle Reston left Ferris, so that is an open vacancy right now with Ferris, but we do have a couple nominees that we'll talk about in our board meetings, so that's. So since I started in April, these are some of my metrics. So the goal for the right place in a twelve-month cycle of one hundred and seventy-five assists, I've done sixty-eight so far, as of Saturday. Or no, I'm sorry, last Tuesday, I've done sixty-eight. Bonus is if I wasn't there, would that connection have happened? Would that resource been helped? Would that person have gotten that next step and been able to go further with their question? Or, you know, I connected a tech company with Sprint Innovations and Grand Rapids, would that have happened if I wasn't there or had this? Well, definitely, because I, I didn't miss them. And there's probably a lot that I missed, but the ones I did capture, I have got sixty-eight so far. And then one of the wins that came up here is the local tech company. First week I started, they're the graduate of Ferris State. He owns, he doesn't have brick and mortar, he does his own apartment. He has fifteen contracted employees all over the world. He's got one in the U.K. He, he does automation and gaming and things like that. And he is growing so rapidly that after I met with him, we, I brought Jenna Wang, who is our supervisor of media tech down at the right place, bring her in, our local, you know, my supporting grand artist, she comes up, we met with him. And we were able to connect him with Sprint Innovations and Grand Rapids and he just put a $15,000 grant to help his marketing plan, so we go and pitch the two games that we've got going forward. So it seems like that, that we, nothing too small, we just got to think outside the box and know we can make something like that. So that was a huge win for us locally. And he's so large, like for us, he's Nickelodeon and he's working on the new Transformers movie, a marketing plan in London right now. So he is out there and he's, you never know who he is, he's still on that street. So good stuff. Some highlights, I have met with Gretchen as an M O I S D and we're trying to bridge the gap between employers, the local school districts, talent and golf recruitment. So we're meeting with employers to see what their needs are and then going back to the schools and seeing what classes are you providing, what classes at the career tech center are you offering? How can we help upskill these students to have these skill sets so they're ready to go to Hampecker, ready to go to Hayward, things like that, to understand what assembly work is or what record design is and things like that? So we're going to try to bridge that gap on upskilling and getting the right skill sets for our local districts, so they can stick here and be engaged with the local employers. With the city of Big Rapids, we're working on the redevelopment community, our C application and so I see a team just in follow-up that, the economic development team of that project. Michigan Economic Development Corporation, on Wednesday, they will be voting on some incentives for a large project and we'll know more on that, but it's been a little while with them. The industrial part, I'm not exactly sure exactly where that's at right now, but the Blue Rowby Building has four very, very invested businesses that want to come into that. So I don't think they'll be there very much longer, but it's in the works, so I'm excited to fill that right away. And then Ferris State University, Gary Wendlowski is the Director for Corporate and Professional Development over there and we've met with him many times, I've even brought the right place staff off their development team to meet with him. They're not, something I've learned with Ferris is they're not just a four-year degree college anymore. They do certification for, for example, the road commission can go there and take their employees and have them learn the asphalt program through Ferris and how to lay the asphalt under the rollers and steel rollers. And it's through corporate, not through credit. So they pay and Ferris can teach these companies and upskill their employees to be able to go back to the workforce. Well, that is a huge, huge bonus that they're really trying to get out and let people know Ferris is more than just a four-year degree, two-year degree. They actually work with corporations, manufacturers, companies to help out. It could be leadership training, it could be any department you can think of. They can help you six, twelve-month certification, two-year certification, things like that. So I'm excited to know about that. So currently I have two open projects in the business expansion and retention, so two existing employers. For example, one is looking at maybe adding another shift and the other one is needing space. So we're looking at different buildings that might be available or how, if we don't have a building available, could they build or do they have finances or up our, out of the county in their case that might be able to hold their, their next, you know, community project, something like that? And then one business attraction project and then one community project with them. And we can talk about elephant in the room, project elephant. So again, these are some slides that we used the other night at September twenty-sixteen, but I want to just reiterate, so the project's goal is twenty-three million, fifty new jobs, two-point-three billion dollar capital investment, is advanced battery production. What we've done so far is in a very short period of time, once we're able to share some more information, is the right place and MacAscan Development Corporation, our executive board have been meeting and trying to roll this out, so we try to get everybody the information as soon as possible, once we're able to share it and get the correct information out there and keep updating as we move forward. Things change very fast and can shift and so we're doing our best to keep everybody up to date on that. The company officials had met with board members from the community to try and update them, answering questions that they might have had. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation did some private meetings and also attended our September twenty-sixth meetings to answer any questions, so we've been from answering those, great support. We actually provided a meeting with the city manager of Holland to ask about the LG battery factory that's been in the city for twelve years and how that affected the city and how the community felt when that came in and just get a real feel on what that might look like. And so I think that was good for all the board members that were voting on those projects, were able to comment and ask some questions. And then on the twenty-sixth, ten of us, I think, were able to tour the LG battery factory down there in Holland and really get some of their own feel for what it actually might look like coming here to Big Rapids. And it was amazing and I, I think that helps people understand the process as well within the company, in the product. So the timeline now, we've shifted this a little bit into the last slide when it was on Monday, so locally, the Renaissance Zone was approved by our local board. This Wednesday, the state will consider the Renaissance Zone that was approved and the other incentives that are on the table, so they'll be voting on Wednesday, um, incentive packages. And then I'm sure we'll hear very shortly after that some announcements on what that might look like. And then in the next three months ahead, what I, I really want to focus on and do for these boards involved after making these critical decisions going forward, since there are many decisions that have to be made. I want to be as transparent as possible, so I'm going to lay out and help assist them with timeline for the next three months and even further about really focus on the next three months, what the ask will be of them, the ask of the community, or if you're not working on it, what it might look like, is everybody informed, what we're going to be working on, so everybody's on the same page. So these are just some things, not necessarily in this order, but you know, the development agreement, the rebuilding of the construction sites, the site plan, the scale of the land and the building connect. So there's a lot of things that will play in the next three years. And then moving forward in the next few months, some things that I've got on my radar on top of the project is the summer manufacturing is anytime in October and November. It's really focused usually on the first season of October, but we've got some great funding for region four to use for this, so as long as we use it anytime in the next couple of months, we're good. So we're gonna, we met with, we have two employers, one in Pacoia County and one in MacAscan, that's interesting participating. We're going to be forced to the youth. We're using the ISD building, so the kids that are going there are already engaged in those lessons, whether it's C N P, well-being, record design, different things like that. So we're going to use those students, use it as Pacoia and the practical economy base. We've got double the funds because Pacoia County out goes region four, but they got the same money, so we have a lot of money to do, and we're taking for the students that will be on the force coming up. And then possible tours through Ferris as well, they're going there to see that, as part of that process as well. Retention business is huge, so you know, I meet with different companies and just get a temperature check, if there anything I can do, where are you at, where are your knees, you know, what's your pain points, what's your pressure points, new talent, new expansion, are you going to fill your doors? You know, I ask these really tough questions to see how I'm going to be able to help them. So that's what is involved in our retention business. I have a lot of professional, professional development training I'm going to be taking for economic development director thing. And then we're kind of restructuring the MacAscan Development Board of Directors, so I have eight on my executive board, I have forty-four on my board of directors. Which is quite unheard of, to be honest. So we are looking at restructuring that, we're going to meet tomorrow, my executive board has a meeting and we're going to meet tomorrow and then our next board of directors meeting is actually, well, it's a special meeting and we're kind of going to kind of focus on that and address that and what that looks like. I hope that people want to be part of it, but whether that mean what values do you have and what values are they bringing forward and really engage that communication going forward. And then something that some of our partner counties do is newer pitch competitions. I know, I only try to do a big one, Ocean and Lego do a joint one and I'm looking to build one for next year and it will be a pitch competition to get on to the writers to pitch their product. They usually have to go five, they have five people that will take the top five and then they have cash awards that they give out and it's voted on by an area panel. So I'm looking to start that here in MacAscan. And then planning the mayor's manufacturing day sometime in the spring, in April and see what that looks like, bring that back for you.
Any questions?
Can you answer?
Kelly, could you tell us who the top funder for the county economic development is in the top down and how much?
I, and I do have that on my laptop. I, I can tell you Ferris, the county, the state, those are the top three. And then we have St. and then Big Rapids Township, MacAscan Township.
The county mayor, that's thirty, I'm looking at Bill because he keeps the books more up.
I have it on my laptop, I think twenty, twenty-five and thirty, I think.
The county's at thirty. The county's at thirty, Ferris is at twenty-five, the city's at twenty and, and the township's at four, Big Rapids Township, maybe the MacAscan Township maybe at two. Green Township does not.
No.
Does not remember. That's true.
So that's, again, that's another, so one of my, I, I, I'm pretty good at fundraising and that's why we're going to restructure that board of directors, because my board, out of all the boards, the counties at the right place, is the only one that doesn't mandate investors to be on that board. And I've got forty-four people. So that's part of that restructuring and hoping to get some people to invest and really try to consolidate that a little bit and.
Thank you. Other questions?
I don't have a question, but thank you very much.
Let's go.
I appreciate it too.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. We are going to take a trip down memory lane. Our commissioners have a very detailed small novel that I wrote for them, but y'all are going to get it from locally. So we're going to start back on March ninth of this year, right here in this room, we held a focus group here at City Hall. And that was just the intent of that, was to introduce some of the city staff that were going to be working on the skate park project, meet some of the skating communities and most importantly, listen and learn from the local skate enthusiasts. We started talking about the skate park project around March first, when we were presented with the opportunity. The unfortunate part was Big Rapids' census numbers went down in 2020. The fortunate part of that was we were now eligible to throw our hat into the pile for the Quit Your Town on the Map Pitch Competition, which is put on every year by Consumers Energy and their foundation. And the pitch competition goes on at the Small Town Rural Development Conference that is held at Crystal Mountain. And when we were thinking of what different projects we want to apply for this project, we thought the skate park is something that was in the Park and Rec master plan that was approved in December twenty-twenty-one, as well as this has been attempted three different times in the past ten years. And the last time it was attempted was in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. And they had gotten to the point of getting design renderings and once the budget, the budget on these projects is always through the roof and that always usually holds it through the floor. So this was us getting it started back up again. And then on April thirtieth of this year, we held our first skate meetup that was hosted at Seashell Park, which is where we're holding the build, the skate park. We had about roughly twenty people come out that afternoon. And the content for the pitch competition video submission was shot at this event. I just included a little picture, you could see Steve's little camera and then just a couple of people hanging out on their bikes and skateboards. Then on May eighteenth of this year, we were at the Small Town Rural Development Conference and we won the first place prize of against a hundred community poll that applied to this competition. We walked away with a first place prize of twenty-five thousand dollars, all thanks to the incredible video made by Steve Cole. And we are very grateful to be able to partner with him and work with him on this. I know we've tried this before, but I'm going to see how the audio wants to play with us today. I don't think I can get it.
Big Rapids is full of rural history. Coming from the first and hills along the mainest leading of the, the clean path through the west end. That is almost a world. Big Rapids is a small rural community with a big heart and lots of changes. As the locals say, we love you. But in order for Big Rapids to truly have it all and put our town on the map, this community desperately needs it.
Hi, I'm Shannon.
I'm Patrick Gable.
We're really excited about having a skate park in Big Rapids. Well, as a mom, I think it's a really great idea for Big Rapids to have a skate park because it will give my kids and other people to, a place to be outside, a place to be physically active, get some fun times, get some exercise. But also I think it's really important for kids to be actually interacting with each other in person rather than just sitting at home doing this.
Kids of all ages, can have fun with skate parks, whether they're drive bys, whether they're students or skateboarders or infants. We also have a university town, so we have people all over the world that live here. They come here to teach, so when young people get together, have fun at the skate park, you're going to have young people from a lot of different areas, from a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different ages. And so you're going to have this opportunity for the focus group to play together and learn the rules and the etiquette of the skate park environment.
Hi, I'm Jill, I like theristic, skateboard, scooter and bike.
My name's Elizabeth and I think a skate park in Big Rapids would be a great opportunity for many people to use their power. Lots of people skateboard, bike, scooter and lipstick, but they don't have many good people that can do that.
The Big Rapids Skate Park Project will put the city on the map as the most colorful, welcoming, modernized skate parks in rural Michigan. This project is unique to the community in so many ways. Most importantly, the city current access to skate parks are tiny skate parks in the city. With the development of a skate park, staff members are scoring options to expand public art in the community. Ideas included are being lost in unique skateable festivals. City staff have been collaborating with community members in the Big Rapids Project Skate Park team. This team is a community-led group that has been advocating for skate parks in the city for over a decade. The group has worked alongside city staff to develop the skate park through separate terms of health, however, lack of funding has always been a big obstacle. A skate park focus group was conducted on March ninth, twenty-twenty-two. The intent of the focus group was to integrate city staff working on this initiative, meet individuals from the skating community, most importantly, listen and learn from skating enthusiasts.
I would love to hear from all of you guys, what it would mean to have to be part of your Big Rapids and without a skate park here right now, how does that impact your ability to skate?
I've gained a lot of relationships, like me and my first game close, the first skating, and I feel like having a skate park, everyone else can have already, it's a positive thing.
I mean to help people with family issues, with better families, I mean to help people drug issues. I myself actually recovered from being an alcoholic, who'd drink them.
Without skate parks, like you have to go to like different places like around Michigan and there's obviously not a lot of skate parks around Michigan, so having one here would be a lot easier and like to come here at night and stuff, skate and meet new friends at all school gates, it would be a lot easier.
I feel like we need one because it's like there's not a lot new in Big Rapids and a lot of kids like to bike and stuff like that and there's nothing where they can do it, so they feel, and that's not fun if you don't have a child.
We travel a lot, actually, like Joe's here, you go to Lego, Grand Rapids a lot, there's not, you're not on your own here and all of a sudden, we're kind of, uh, well, riding in local traffic.
The skate park will be constructed in Seashell Park, which is currently vacant parkment. Being located in a city park will literally put skate parks on the city's map. With the help from Consumers Energy, the skate park project will finally become reality and truly become a destination for skaters, bikers, BMXers, scooter riders and roller boarders, both locally and racially. Big deal must be considered.
That wonderful video of people to really jumpstart this project and create some momentum of like, wow, like this thing is really going to happen this time. And so on July thirtieth of this year, we hosted our second skate meetup and we had around fifteen people come out that day. We were able to partner with some local restaurants and Topping's Frozen Yogurt gave us this whole five gallon container of lemonade to be able to have some beverages on site that day and some stickers to hand out as well. And then Fatty Speeds also donated five, five-dollar gift cards for us to be able to hand out to people at the event as they were doing cool tricks and just thanking them for coming out for the day. So it was really fun. And Holly, that's who, it's in the right picture, she really wanted to make sure everyone's bellies were full that afternoon, so she went out and bought a flash house grill, so with no hot dogs, in the parking lot for everyone. So it's been really cool to see the different support of, from all different angles from people as we organize these events. And even this photo was taken by the pioneer, they sent a photographer down that afternoon and had them take some shots and even wrote up a little news blurb about it. So it's been really exciting to work with all these different folks. August twenty-second of this year, we hosted our third skate meetup in partnership with the Big Rapids Summer Fest Committee. We wanted to host a skate meetup on that date and our E B A director let us know that was the date of Summer Fest. So we reached out to the committee and asked if they had room for us at the event to have a skate meetup. They said yes, of course. And we even got our planning commissioner, Chris Shane, he's out there on his board for a little bit with everyone, so it was super fun and we had about thirty people come out that afternoon to join us. And then August first through thirtieth, we partnered with Topping's again and they hosted a fifty percent of proceeds fundraiser where they made two special bogaties, the kickflip and the board slide, and they sold those the entire month of August. And he fundraised a total of three hundred dollars that month, thanks to that awesome partnership with them. And then on September seventh of this year, some city staff and elected officials, we were at Old Aldenanda and we were able to chat with at least seventy-five students about skate park projects and some of the upcoming events, hand out flyers. And then on September fourteenth, I think initially that was our intent to come and talk about public spaces, community places. And I had gotten all of the infrastructure on their website portal in and I had reached out to patronicity to set up a meeting and make sure all our i's were dotted and t's were crossed. And they were ready to give us the green light and then they asked how much we had received from our D N R trust fund grant. And I shared with them that's actually a grant we're looking to apply for on April first of two thousand and twenty-three. And they said, because we don't have that grant allocation yet, the intent of public spaces, community places is to be that last final push over the finish line. So that was when folks are donating to your patronicity campaign, they can donate and see a turnaround of that project coming to life and being open to the community within a year of that donation. And so based on that conversation, their suggestion was to kick off the fundraiser on October first of two thousand and twenty-three instead of two thousand and twenty-two. And so it will look different of when M E B C will be met. Um, and so it will look different of when MEBC will be matching every donation, dollar for dollar. Um, the big picture of the project, um, is still on the same timeline. So that's where on October first, uh, which is this past Saturday, we still went ahead and had our event that we had scheduled. Um, and we had our spooky season skate meetup in fun. Um, Josh Spicer, who is a community member and fantastic drummer, did a thirty-minute drum solo at the event. Um, and it was awesome. Um, and we had a really great time watching him jam out. You can see a picture of him with his drum set in the middle. Um, we had a tide dive station, a friendship regolith station. Um, and it was a really great time. We had about, uh, twenty people come out this weekend. And that is where, at the end of the month, we'll be partnering with the Fall Fest Committee, uh, to do a skate and costume parade. So in addition to doing the costume parade that usually goes into the Trump retreat, uh, we're asking folks to decorate their, their boards, their rollerblades, their bikes, whatever their jam is, and add that component, um, to the event on October twenty-ninth. And from here, uh, what we're going to be going from here to cross the finish line and construct a skate park is right now, uh, myself and Emily Shemansky, we are working on figuring out the most cost-effective way to create customized stickers for the project, um, just to be able to create some awareness. Um, and Tom's flag is always good and fun. Um, and we are working with a Ferris student. Uh, we're meeting with him this week. He, um, has to write a grant proposal for his final project and is really excited about the skate park project and asked if he would be able to work with us to do his final project, writing a grant for the skate park. So we want to set them up for success. Uh, and we're going to be adding additional donor levels to the patronicity platform, which is going to stay intact until the fundraiser is kicked off on October first of twenty-three. Um, and Emily Shemansky will have the administrative rights in that portal. And then January and March of this year, we're going to be working with our grant coordinator, Laura, to get a DNR trust fund grant submitted by April first, which we should know how much we will be allocated from that grant. Uh, between August and September, as other usual timeline goes, based on my conversation with Suzanne, who she's left. And then next October through September, we'll have our Public Spaces Community Places fundraiser and carry out our social media calendar we've created. And in the spring and summer of two thousand and twenty-four, we'll build the skate park and the pump track in that it should be open to the public unfall. Thank you very much.
On our public comment section, if you have public comments or things not related to the agenda, please rise or at least have the, uh, the mic in your hand and demonstrate yourself in your location. Stay civil and humane.
Wayne O'Neill, nine oh three, Woodward. I have been here on more than one occasion talking to people about polykarts. I have talked to City Hall on three occasions. I came down here last Friday, a week ago Friday or other, and talked to a lady in that department upon a certain house over on Waverly. Every week, week after week after week, there's five polykarts sat chuffing in a workroom in front of this particular house that's in the three hundred block. And nothing has been done now, and I don't understand why. It's very obvious. Uh, and that, there's two houses side by side. There's seven polykarts sitting there, five in one house, and, uh, I requested something be done that's just happening. And to me, that, that house should have gotten a ticket a long time ago. I've been here, this is at least the third month in a row that I've been here and talked to people about it, so. I think somebody needs to talk to whoever the gentleman is that's responsible and ask why.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Mayor, I can comment on that if that's true with you. Uh, I certainly can be the one to follow up with Andrew. I have had a conversation with Eric specifically on this topic, and I know that's something he's looking at in terms of potential code changes because I know that's a position that staff holds, is, is we have some challenges in that department. And I also will follow up with this one specifically. So happy to do that.
I could probably, tomorrow morning, everything's close to the end of midnight tonight. I know I can walk from my neighborhood and I can find a thirty dollar gift card to use that for the night, at least. So if, if, no, I just want to send my something to him.
I'm clear, I'll say I'm due. Well, uh, Mayor, I will report back to the commission and, and happy to do that. Other public comment?
I'm just waiting to be a repeat online. It's sad to see the flowers, though. I would trust that you give a special, special thanks to the guy or the guys that took care of those flowers. Neighbors, the word. And I don't know if any of you saw it, but I went in there and seen a couple months ago, maybe? And on their advertisement board, it said something similar, just thank you, Big Rapids, for the flowers downtown. And I thought that was, that was really, but, uh, they were beautiful. And now they're gone.
Isn't it sad to see the first frost and have them all here?
You bet it is.
Mark, if you could try to tell those folks we're all.
Yeah, I'm thinking, Mayor.
After you.
We, we will do that. It starts from Heather and goes down. There's a whole bunch of people who are responsible for making those flowers happen. And, uh, and we will follow through with our things.
I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, their thing this year, they, uh, they're.
And I talked.
Other public bills.
You said you had to play with those.
Thank you. Other public comment?
During none, we'll move on to general business. The first bit of business is the resolution accepting the DNR Land and Water Conservation Fund contract agreement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so some time ago, we applied to the, uh, DNR for the Land and Water Conservation Fund as part of our Splashpad project, and we're awarded the grant. And we are, uh, have gotten to the point of the grant agreement, which you have in your package. Uh, Eric has been through this for the fine tooth comb, right, Eric?
Yep.
And, uh, there's lots of standard, uh, grant jargon. I see there's by American, uh, clauses and so forth, but these are very much, um, types of agreements we're used to working under and are comfortable with how they are written. Recommend, uh, moving forward to you this evening.
Just right to discussion of our motion. Support and support. Discussion. Anyone?
My only question was just a refresher for myself. The fifty percent match, did we allocate some of the, um, marijuana ones for that?
We did, and we also had, uh, a huge amount of fundraising, uh, that's specific to this Splashpad, yes. We had that match in hand.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone? There is none? Is all a question?
Franklin?
No.
Athlee?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is a proposal to accept the Hager consultant to manage the money. State law, that works.
Mayor, if you would allow me.
Sure.
Briefly, in the agreement, nine E, little I, um, the grantee, meaning in this instance, the city, will detain the services of a professional architect, landscape architect, or engineer registered in state admission to serve as the grantee's prime professional. That is an example of one of the elements in the contract by which the city has to do things like, this one's coming right up. That's why.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Eric. That is, that is helpful. Then, so as we apply and, and are being successful for these grants, um, which is wonderful, it comes with strings attached, which, which we're, uh, that's what we're doing in this, uh, example here. So this is actually for the public gathering spaces, I think is the name of that grant, uh, which is not the, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's the CBDG one that we've applied for, but, but it's very similar, like Eric, uh, pointed out. Um, one of the things they're requiring of us is a third-party certified grant administration. And so we went out to bid for those services, once with no response, and the second time with one bidder. Our one bidder is Lindsay Hager, um, who is involved with the Fremont Area Community Foundation and, but also does work, um, separately. And in fact, before his time at the foundation, I think he almost exclusively did that work, so. Uh, very comfortable working with Lindsay, knowing personally, and, uh, I believe he'll do a good job for us. And this is something that they're requiring us, uh, to do, so that's why we have it reported this evening.
Mr. Brady, we don't have ten for certain grants that we do for other grants.
Yes, this is specific to the CBDG dollars.
And this one's for that, no?
And not for that, right? Not for the other.
Right, not for the one I mentioned, Eric.
Mm-hmm. God.
And I'd like to make one other point, similar to, um, a few elements for this same grant that were approved at previous meetings. Um, this, the environmental review and the Schiphol review, the historical preservation office review, they're all reimbursable after we get the grant award, which is expected in March.
It seems backwards to approve the manager of the grant when we're able to have the grant yet. This seems kind of different.
We struggled with that as a staff, too, Mayor. Um, in fact, you know, delayed in, in bringing, maybe not this one as much as some of the others, because, yeah, see, it's hard to even talk about openly, uh, without the grant award, but we're very comfortable. Uh, we've had very positive indication from the state. We believe that we're going to be successful, even though that has not been announced to date.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the resolution hiring Hager consultant?
So moved.
The part.
There's a motion to support. Further questions regarding that?
Uh, question to Mr. Williams. Uh, Lucy Hager sits on the workforce development board for my employer, Mission West Central. Does that cause any conflict?
Um, I don't think so, but repeat what that?
Lucy Hager sits on the, the board for Mission West Central.
Um, in my opinion, that is not a conflict of interest. It's, your disclosure of it is appreciated, but I don't see it as a conflict of interest unless the commission wants to take it up. I would just recommend, Mayor, that he be allowed to vote and that there is no finding of a conflict between us.
The commission would undertake the advice of our city attorney, and we would like to go. Thank you, Ken.
Athlee?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Simmons?
Yeah.
Cut.
Yeah.
One of the reasons this meeting is shorter is because we're, we're on that new, get this stuff ahead sooner. So there wasn't as much to put here because we're trying to give ourselves a few weeks to really get what comes off right now. That's why it's a little abbreviated, so I'm, I assume next time it's going to be unabbreviated.
It, it still looks somewhat abbreviated, but I think, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get there. We're, it's a learning curve for, for us, and we're, we're learning.
Weather sure does serve us on day one. Probably with contractors and things going out to bid, there's a little bit of a learning curve on the outside. People getting the information to us, you know, maybe they're used to getting it to us by a Wednesday, not a, or a Friday, and now they have to get it to us a little bit sooner.
Forward session on schedule business, please.
Mayor, I have one.
Sure.
Uh, I wanted to pass on to the whole commission that we've had a little bit of a bump in the road with our Hemlock Park project, but there's always, every project we do, we have a bump in the road. Uh, the surfacing material they put on the basketball court, uh, they put two coats in there, weather temperature sensitive, and we had, um, a failure of the one, of the second coat on the basketball court. Now, uh, they're going to redo it, but they are going to redo it in the spring. Now, that same coating would be applied to the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. And so the, the attempt to get those done, although it was once planned, uh, has been abandoned just because they need overnight temperatures. I believe they said sixty degrees, which is, could happen, but just given the problem we've had, I, I think the whole, the whole thing has been put off. So you may get questioned on that. I'm happy to talk to anyone about it. Is it, it's a disappointment? Uh, but again, it's, uh, the bump in the road is, is in terms of the overall success of the project. Mayor, I'd actually just want to back that up. Mark, you know when the breakaway will be, nine on, and that's going to be, please?
It should be this week, but I'll follow up and report to the city manager. He can give you another update.
They were shipping, I think, on the thirtieth, and I think they may have them in hand, and we'll get them up there ASAP.
And likewise with kayak launch, that's not going to be in place until spring.
Oh, the kayak launch is important.
They don't have all of the materials the manufacturer is having shipping delay.
Oh, gee.
For, for clarification, uh, the pickleball courts won't even be attended in full spring. The culture. Okay.
Same as that. Heather, I hope we were really careful on the basketball court, make sure we were meeting all those temperature requirements. And I think, I never heard you say, oh, we just got a little cold that one night, and I heard that we met all those.
Well, we're not the only community that the painters struggled with as well. I have verification on that. So they have highly encouraged us to not do any further painting. They're experts at this point. We're taking their word and advice.
It's worrisome, like, we know, but I'm hearing, I'm mature, and then it's still to heal. That is, that product is a good one. All those questions. Valid points, Mayor. Very valid. So we, I think, feel the same way. I thought we cleared those hurdles, but they're blaming it on, on weather. Yes, that's a wrap. People sometimes don't get under, over sixty all night in a long time. And it could be June, July.
It could be a minute.
Yes. So it'll be heard about, especially during the pickleballers.
Oh, I'm sure.
That's why you play on it. They said you could play on it, so we come and fix it, or? Yes. Another discussion of business that's unscheduled. During none, is there a motion for? The N? Or is there support? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All the same.